Good morning, welcome to the June tenth regular session of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Michelle Walter, roll call please.
Curtin Bach.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Brant.
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please, uh, please join for a moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand if you're able, join for the pledge of allegiance. Lied allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda receivers proposal, minute.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, public comments, this is for anyone who wishes to speak to the board on an issue that is not on this morning's agenda, either in the room or online. Seeing none, we'll move to item three, claims and payments, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures. That the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as well.
So moved.
Second.
Sweeten it please.
Good morning Board, our total bill paid today is four hundred thirty-one thousand forty-eight dollars and thirty-six, thirty-five cents, sorry. And of that, five thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents is coming from the sixty-fourty fund. We are paying, um, for ITs purchasing about thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand nine oh two ninety-five in computers, replacement computers for the android placement cycle. And we are paying sixty-seven thousand eight seventy-two sixty-three to MCA air kits for various kinds of rock for our gravel roads. Cedar Valley Nature Trail, thirty-six thousand seven forty-two dollars and ten cents. And also paying for acid excavating for the art and erosion control project, thirty-eight thousand three ninety-four and twenty-five cents. I think that's all the larger, uh, significant items today. Everything appears to be in order, any questions for me?
All right, we've got a motion and a second, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Curtin Bach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads from elected officials.
Good morning Board, Kathy Inglis, we have a roof construction update this morning. Our Tamaroe paving project is going well, the paving was completed yesterday with, with finishing up on the side road approaches. I don't know how we put those fifty-foot fillets on the intersections of our paved roads with our gravel roads. So some of those were finished up yesterday. And now the, the shoulder rack is being placed on that project, it's five, almost five mile long project, so that is going well. Our Debeep Road culvert project started yesterday and Debeep Road is now closed, uh, between approximately the Raymond City limits and Debeep Road. Or excuse me, Campbell Road, excuse me. And that work started, uh, yesterday, that is a large box culvert that's being replaced and it is being cast in place. So it has to be formed and poured in the field and that's going to take approximately three months. So that road will be closed for most of the summer now, well, all of the summer now. Will keep you posted, uh, we do have signage up in place, a D two R app has been established and can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
I do have an update as well, um, it's been nine or ten months, but I'm happy to report that we're finally fully staffed in our office. Um, and I have our newest employee who just started this week, our newest elections technician, Isaac Mata, who's here.
We're Isaac, welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, welcome.
So we're very excited to have him and very excited to say we're fully staffed. It's been, it's been quite a year for us, but things are going well.
Yesterday was his first day?
Yep.
When's the last time you were fully staffed?
Well, about ten months ago.
How, how long a break before then?
So we were down a couple people in, um, AP and payroll.
Okay.
We had somebody didn't work out and then, um, then we had a retirement, which that took a while to replace. So, um, we replaced the one in payroll in February, the one in accounts payable in March, and then elections here this week.
Nice.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good feeling and, um, all three of them have been a really great addition.
Uh, item five, minutes approval for the June third.
So moved.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll have two hearings this morning, a, a bid opening proposed at nine oh five, uh, proposed FY twenty-six Steel Co. project. And nine oh seven rezone ordinance number seven seven dash two nine seven, uh, Robert and Margaret Mills. Item seven is a consent agenda, the items listed below, uh, will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
So moved.
Thank you.
Resolution, uh, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Curtin Bach.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item A A, resolution to appoint Q M B Bank, uh, N A, uh, West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agents. Note registrar and transfer agent, approve the paying agent, note registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorize the chair to sign for same as recommended by Michelle Weeden, her finance director.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion needed on this, pretty standard.
Pretty standard, they handle our debt, so as bondholders want to buy bonds, they work through that. And yeah, it's a dirty middle E for them to process all those payments.
Uh, roll call please, Ms. Michelle.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Curtin Bach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item A B, resolution to approve and authorize a form of loan agreement and authorize and provide for the issuance of five million dollar general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-five. And levying a tax to pay, uh, pay the notes and authorize the chair to sign for same. And to approve the tax exemption certificate and authorize the county treasurer to sign for same. And to continue, and to approve continuing disclosure cer- uh, certificate and authorize the chair to sign for same as recommended by Michelle Weeden, her finance director.
So moved. Second.
This is actually the documents for the debt, nothing unusual, I don't think of any space, but.
Uh, roll call please.
Curtin Bach.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine C, hearing in bid opening proposed FY twenty-six Steel Co. project, we have a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, with notice of publication, uh, a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, do we have a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, anything not filed?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries, um, what's going with bids?
So all bids were received by three P M on Friday, June sixth. The first bid comes from Prairie Road Builders Incorporated, Ableton, Iowa, they have submitted their required bid bond. Their bid is one hundred fifteen thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars seventy-two cents, one one five comma one eight seven point seven two. The second bid comes from Stay Built Construction Company, Harlan, Iowa. They have also submitted the bid bond security as required. Their bid, one hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars twenty-two cents, one two eight comma one seven seven point two two. The next bid is from Blacktop Service Company and subsidiaries of Humboldt, Iowa. They have submitted the, uh, the bid bond. Their bid is one hundred thirteen thousand eighty-eight dollars sixty-one cents, one one three comma zero eight eight point six one. We appear to have a fourth bid online, but we are having some technical difficulties. Should we pause Mike for and come back to this item or while we try to?
So, um, do we need to try to restart the, the application or what do you think is the?
I'm trying to work.
I, I don't see a problem with opening the bids on different, as long as we can, as we get to that now, otherwise I think we could have that bid or opportunity to submit it again. It seems like pure state included, it sounds like there's some other, is that pure state?
Yes, it sounds like it's a technical computer issue, not necessarily, not with the, the bid itself.
So I think we get as many bids as we can get open right now, um, and then whatever one, ones we can, um, we reach out to them to have them submit in a different way if we're not able to rectify that now. So, so other bids we can open or?
These are the three that we have received hard copy.
Kathy, could you clarify one thing for us?
Yes.
Was it Blacktop Service Company and was it a Humboldt still here?
The last one you did, I'm sorry.
Uh.
We were confused.
Um, just because it mentioned Cedar Falls.
Yes, they have multiple, um, subs- uh, multiple branches or companies, they've told us. The bond says Humboldt, I think their headquarters is in Humboldt, that, that a party who submitted the bid lives in Cedar Falls.
But it was the Blacktop Service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Give me a second, let me see if this works. Do you know how many we received electronically, was it all the others that were listed here?
I believe one.
We provided you the, the entire list of people who got the proposal. On that sheet for instance.
I'm gonna have to get ahold of the vendor that does our online bidding, so as part of the online bids, they require, um, digital IDs to secure the bids. And you have to create a digital ID, verify your identification, um, and then install that digital ID on a computer, which is usually on my laptop or also on my desktop. Did verify those this morning and made sure I had new ones and everything appeared to be working, but it, uh, is not currently and it will not let me open the bid that is there. So I'm gonna have to contact that vendor and see, I just tried to even create a new digital ID as we are here. And it seems like it is functioning until we go and open the bid and it just will not let me open that bid. So I will have to get ahold of them and see how to proceed with that and we can talk with Mike.
Is it any benefit to identify, do we know who it is to?
I believe it's Farnor asphalt, but I don't know for sure, I, I can't see unless we.
Okay.
Well, actually it let me.
I just.
Yes, it is Farnor asphalt, it just won't let me open the bid.
The bid, yeah, okay, that at least identifies them as a.
So what I think we do is, uh, since we're done with the hearing and that's been closed already, at this point we just, there's not, not a hearing to recess so to speak. But what we do is we give this back on the agenda for next week and we, uh, read that final bid and then we go ahead and put them, you know.
If we can get it, um, maybe we can get it unlocked, they, they can't change their bid at this point, I mean it's, they can't change it. We can get the digital ID to work and we can open it, it'll still be the same bid, it's, obviously it's locked, we can't even get to it, so.
And, uh, there, there are, there's another hearing coming up and there is a discussion on here, personal discussions with.
I, I can try and call it there.
If there's any way you could, yeah.
Let me try and get ahold of them now and we will see if we can get this resolved quickly or what that looks like.
All right.
We love technology.
Mike, do we need a motion to suspend this hearing at this point?
Um, I think the hearing's already been closed.
Okay.
Uh, so at this point, what we would do is we've, we've opened the bids if we can, there isn't really any further action. We can take on item, item, uh, eight C three until we get the other bid. And, uh, item, uh, eight C four has become moot, so I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah.
Please move on to item.
Yep.
Out of a resolution, second, second. All right, well, that was fun. Eight D, uh, proposed rezone ordinance number seven seven dash two nine seven, Robert and Margaret Mills, this is a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication, with notice, a public carry.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Two, uh, D two, motion to re- uh, to waive, the first reading as notice was published on May thirty-first. In the wire to receive a false decree in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa, the publication was approved of the requested, uh, request submitted by Robert and Margaret Mills to rezon- rezon point two six acres of land. From C M Commercial Manufacturing to A Agricultural District located at four three eight South Elkhorn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, you know, uh, motion to close the hearing is, uh, when oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any comments?
Okay, so this, uh, rezone, they had a dog boarding business, um, it was rezoned originally in twenty nineteen. They closed it earlier this year, uh, due to just various issues that they were having with the business. Um, so their seeking to rezon this area, they had talked to the utility company and they had stated that it needed to be downzoned to get a lesser utility rate since commercial utility rates are higher. Um, and so that's kind of the purpose behind this rezone, it will match this, uh, the zoning will match the majority of this other property. Um, this part will still stay zoned A R, um, but this will revert back to the A Agricultural District.
The part that is not highlighted currently, that's all Ag.
Yep.
I saw it was unanimous vote from the N C.
Yep, it was a unanimous vote.
In the event that somebody wants to purchase this home and, and start that business up again, what would be the procedure they have to come back to?
They would have to go through the rezon process again, um, and go through that.
That's kind of unusual to even have this type of a request, I was gonna say, I didn't realize, you know, utilities cost, it makes sense, but I just hadn't, don't think we've had one similar to that.
Yeah, this, this is the first, uh, commercial back to Ag one, I remember, but perfectly fine, but.
Yeah. Anything you want to say, if you say something.
Well, yeah, so that, that's one big driver, the other driver is as it's zoned, um, commercial manufacturing, we're not allowed to do any work on the building. So technically we would have to have a licensed contractor to come in and remove all of the kennels. My husband wants to make it into a man cave.
Yeah. I'm talking about.
Yeah. So.
This is conditional approval within my.
But it, you know, um, we're, we're rule followers, so we're looking to do it the proper way.
We do have a motion and a second, uh, to close the hearing, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, resolution to suspend the rules required, uh, requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion and second, roll call please.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Curtin Bach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. All right, ordinance adoption, that the ordinance amending ordinance number three, thirty-six, has amended the Blackhawk County, uh, Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine. By adding subsection number two nine seven to section six, B, uh, rezoning certain property as described on the above, uh, request submitted by Robert and Margaret Mills. Consider, uh, the same for adoption and if adopted, it will be known as ordinance number seven seven dash two nine seven.
So moved.
Second.
We need to, roll call on this.
Um, yes. Leyland.
Yes.
Curtin Bach.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Tell them to join the mirrors. All right, item A E, discussion of possible board action, uh, for county participation in community parades.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
I don't even know if I need those. I think it was just really because of the insurance question for the most part, but then it made sense maybe for just a evaluation or what everybody thought, I think, of the parade and where we were going with it. I know Gabby, you've had a probably a large role, probably with, I think, so much of this, but I was gonna say, I don't know if you wanted to open with some comments or if things went too even on the parade.
Yeah, um, we had, we just participated in my Water of the Days Parade, we had about twenty-five, I think, um, staff members participate. I think the biggest thing was having so many people from different departments, um, a couple very long time employees were like, oh, we emailed and we've never met face to face. So it was a really good way, um, we had people from the sheriff's office helping public health pass out toothbrushes because otherwise we were holding up the whole parade. Um, but it was just, it was just a really great way for everybody to kind of come together. But some of the questions have been like, obviously the My Water of the Days Parade is a big one, I, we've been doing it, or it's been going on for years, but we'd like to go to some of the rural parades as well. And especially because the roads department serves the more rural areas and the question came up of whether or not staff could have their kids ride along or walk in the parade. And a lot of businesses do that, like encourage families, I've seen Cedar Valley Hospice have their families walk in the parade. But we're different, we're government, and so we wanted to make sure that, um, we were doing everything appropriately and not, um, violating any rules or anything. And also safety of course is our, our number one thing, but we do feel like, uh, we might get even more participation from, um, people if they can have their families join in as well. Uh, we had a couple people that backed off at the last minute because they didn't realize they couldn't have their kids with them and they had to go pick them up or something like that. So those are, those are kind of the things that had come up from it, everything.
No, not that.
No. I think the insurance was, there were several different opinions, I think, and thoughts on the insurance, I think that, but I think that really kind of ironed itself out with different ones talking to each other or whatever. So it sounded like we had the insurance coverage in place now, so family members and us, as long as we had what spotters on some of the vehicles and did some of the safety kind of measures.
Some of the bigger vehicles, yeah. And, and I think the big thing was, um, making sure that, you know, if people are riding in a vehicle, they're riding, you know, following, um, safety vehicle rules, like wearing seat belts and that sort of thing. I think that public health, I think Caitlin's on, I think public health has a, like, form that people sign, um, if they're a non-employee riding in county vehicles, I think Todd shared, did Todd share that with us?
I thought that Caitlin has it, I haven't seen it.
Okay. So I mean, that might be something that we can look at and revise, go ahead Caitlin.
Um, I was just gonna say that we do have a form that allows, uh, non-employees to ride in, um, vehicles that has gone through legal and Brad with safety. So we could use that one, I can, I definitely can share it.
I think they were like waivers or something we were talking about, wasn't it?
That would. Yes. Right.
So it was kind of, uh, bigger things.
And on a most technical level, waivers, you sign up for your kids all the time, there's always a question of whether they can be enforced or they, they make the insurance carriers feel better.
Yeah.
Well, I do think it's, it's like kind of a, an opportunity to go through the rules, you know, and so, yeah, it is kind of just a formality, but at least then you know that you've talked to them and said, okay, you need to be buckled in, you need to do this and that, so. Um, but yeah, we had some really great enthusiasm with the roads department, uh, ideas of floats next year, so, um, yeah, a lot of enthusiasm.
I'd say just use the waiver and do as many ones as you can.
Yep.
Uh, I think it was really great, so hats off to you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, no, but it looked like everybody was having a great time, I thought, um, at the parade, so I got that, yeah, it came off as fun, I thought really well, yeah.
Except that we lost our hearing.
Free live band.
Yes.
Two hours under the overpass with one of the drum lines pounding in our ears, maybe frequently.
Yes.
Hard to take after a while.
Did Michelle sign a waiver?
What?
Anybody could hear afterwards, yeah, but that's our.
Does that seem like it answers all your questions too Kathy, as far as were there anything, was there anything left? I know you were good to bring those items up, just because it is safety and, and some of the things and family members and different than employees, but I was gonna say, did that answer then that it sounded like everybody's all right with everything about that?
I believe so. Yeah, we just, uh, we'd like to take a dump truck and a mortar rater, um, we know we need spotters for the mortar rater in particular, uh, we know we're not throwing anything out of the vehicles.
Yeah.
They'll be in cars, or, like Gabby said, we'd be complying with the motor vehicle rules, who's, you know, who's sitting the seats, uh, the V seatbelt and that type of thing. And then of course our employees, if they don't, that's right, operating the equipment.
Are there insurance issues at all typically, like when others would ride in the, in the vehicles, like the graders or the trucks and things like that, which I would assume like you have your children or something in, is that ever?
We've just never, never really brought it up before, we, I don't, to my knowledge, we haven't had any reason to have people's families in the dump trucks, of course. There's really, the motor graders only carry one person, so it's really the dump trucks that are.
Sounds like.
I did draft up some guidelines that, I wanted to wait and see if you had other concerns, but I did draft some guidelines, I don't know if you wanna just make it guidelines we share with our staff or if you want it to be policy, but. And we need to have Mike review that and stuff, I just was trying to put some ideas down.
Cause we've got, the meantime, we've got parade or two coming up too, that I don't know if that could be something, but we've got some coming up immediately. I think it was this week or was it next week?
I don't know if they're doing one this week, but.
I think we decided to defer, to skip the, was it, uh?
La Porte.
La Porte, this year, because we didn't know an answer, so I think there's one or two in July.
Is there a spot for folks to sign up?
So, uh, the rural parades are a lo- uh, kind of show up if you want to be in it kind of thing, and so.
I mean for.
Oh, so yes, um, so for My Water of the Days, we sent out an email and people signed up. And then one of the questions that I asked was if we had, did other ones, would you be interested? And there were several yeses or depends on the day, that sort of thing, and so probably what we would do, what I would envision like for next year is having a list, uh, ahead of time. Because these aren't unusual things, like Hudson always has it the third week of July, I think Dunkerton's also the third week of July, La Porte City Trails is in June. So having our list ahead of time and saying, these are the things that we anticipate doing. And then hopefully by then we also have some type of, um, policy or procedure for how staff can get that time back. And, um, so I've had, I have some ideas, I've, I've talked with Amanda, but that's what I would like to do so that then going forward, people know what, what, what is being offered and what they can take advantage.
what is being offered and what they can take advantage of. Baby steps in getting organized.
Well, sure, first time to be able to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, but it was really good, it was really good, like we heard, like, what was cool is hearing a lot of people yell, oh, Black Hawk County Public Health, or Black Hawk County, you know, yelling at us along the the route was very, very fun, so.
I want to give out candy, I was gonna get to give out candy.
Well, Michelle Hermosusers brought candy on her own, um, but yeah, we were toothbrush and stickers, cause we felt, you know, public health and government.
No, they're all candy.
Ah, candy, all right.
Yeah.
That might be the only option we would take.
But then it had her, but it robust, yeah.
It's just the candy.
It's only because of the toothbrush.
Yeah.
We can see it's supposed to be a case, actually.
Yeah. Do we need to make a formal motion then far as approving
quite a little.
Participation during.
Brand. Certainly can, uh, I wonder if it isn't something better seen for a policy, uh, because we instead of have something like this laid out in paper with a form attached to it, I think, so I think that's something that I don't know when the next parade is in town, that we could potentially participate in.
We're anticipating, um, I think it's like July eighteen through nineteen.
It's pretty short.
Yeah.
Short notice, but I think it could be done at least if we discuss it today. No, but I, I'd be a little hesitant to have you make a motion right now, just because it's, you gotta, you gotta get all the stuff in it, and then we gotta go back and formalize it as a policy.
Well, we've already participated in one, I guess, we can't do this year and.
Yeah.
But I, I think we did the right thing by getting ahold of insurance and saying, what's okay, what's not okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, right.
Good, it's better late than never.
So would it be okay to do the one in July and then be working on a policy that actually has some meat to it rather than trying to put it together?
Yes. As, as long as we're following the policy, then.
Okay, yep. And we did have a checklist too, so for people that signed up, we did check them in, you know, because they did, uh, either get complex time, you know, to, for participating, so we did check them in.
How about for this July one that we, since, so that we don't have to rush and have a policy in place, we just do it with the understanding that they'll use the release form from public health for any, uh, non.
Yeah. That's already.
I think you could have, uh, a motion to approve, uh, employees, family members, uh, attending the next parade on behalf of Black Hawk County, provided that family members sign the waiver, that's what invited.
All right, I'll, I'll offer that motion.
Oh, and operate, not just the next one, but operate.
Yeah, yeah.
Got a motion, you have a second?
That was one of my questions was about, I want to make sure that employees know that we're, we're, and that's what they're involved.
Did I, was that, huh, was that a second?
No, I thought.
Okay, okay, okay.
I didn't do any of it, I was like, all righty.
Uh, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right. Motion carries.
Any other questions?
You said twenty, about twenty five people participate.
Twenty, twenty five, yeah.
Yeah, thanks to all, all of you who did.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to, I got stuck in Illinois dealing with some stuff, but.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, and a lot of departments represented, which was really.
There was, they did a great job with the photos too, showing the different departments, so that was, yeah, I thought that was neat.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So you said the next one is in July, are we not doing circus?
Yes. Um, I don't think we, that was the plan for this year, we're kind of, um, eating the elephant slowly, so. And because at one point we were thinking, um, My Water of the Days and then the La Porte City one, so that was gonna be two back to backs, so, um, yeah, but from my years in public health, I know you gotta ease people into a lot of participation, so we'll do this one and the one in Dunkerton, and then, um, kind of have a more formalized schedule for the next year. I believe public health is also participating in the Summer Soul Classic too, which is maybe the week before the Dunkerton one, so there's opportunities to participate, that's a fun one, lots of real teams.
No highway overpasses.
No highway overpasses, yes. Great.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other reports or information from the board?
I, I think we've, uh.
Oh, yeah, we do, yeah, yeah.
The engineer's office.
Oh, yay.
I'm ready to work this back.
Sounds good.
So, just have the one, says Farmer.
Okay, you can see the fourth bid comes from Farmer Asphalt Sealers, auto. Whatever it says on your sheet there. One hundred thirty nine thousand nine hundred seventy seven dollars and fifty one cents.
Very glad that all worked out. We have a motion, uh, to the board supervisor's review in place, file the bid to allow time. To review said bids is recommended by Kathy Missless, I'm the engineer.
So moved, second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Motion carries. Uh, now we'll move down to item nine, any reports of input from the board? Passed out the flyers for the understanding property assessments, community town hall meetings. So, folks haven't seen this yet.
So I was able to share some of this with the folks in Hudson last night, and, uh, there's been quite a bit of interest in what's, uh, what's being gonna be presented in there. If any of you want to be involved in it, it's not something just me, it's, uh, talking to folks in the community, what they wanted to know about what the county does, this was one of the things that kept coming up, is there's things that the services at the county does that some folks have no clue on, so, uh, talking with TJ, he has a, a PowerPoint. Uh, I'm gonna start off a little bit with just my personal pro- personal property and talk about the history where property assessments, or not assessment, yeah, assessments have been at. The only times we'll be talked about as far as property taxes would be just kind of showing the growth over the years compared to the valuations is a part of that. Like I shared last night, this is not something for people to come bitch about the property taxes, this is strictly to, uh, let folks know this is the process when a county assessor goes through what his regulations are and how things are done. So, uh, two, two events, Tuesday, June twenty fourth, five thirty, in Waterloo, June twenty fifth. Cedar Falls Library, five thirty as well. Uh, there is limited seating, so there's a QR code or a phone number. Gabby's helping with, uh, taking that information, uh, as things progress.
Are these, are these, uh, do we post these and publish these so that if all five of us show up, we don't have issue? Um, probably.
We're gonna have to, I, I was thinking, I met with Rich last week, cause I said I, um, was just wanted to clarify for my own self, I said that I know he'd done a lot of the work and was putting a lot of this together, but that it wasn't just his event, it was really just Black Hawk County's event, because in the event that all of us did show up, or all five of us were there, um, to answer questions or just be a part of it, and so that's why he was mentioning he was gonna say something at today's meeting, that it is that way. But I thought, yeah, we do have to do that, because I'm assuming all of us very easily could attend one both or whatever. And going forward, I guess, that we have these types of events and stuff, that that is the way we do it, much like I said, Farm Girl's probably not the best example, but it is one that where we post it and all of us are invited, included, participate if we wish to, if we can, if we don't, or something too, but yeah, just give us idea. That he wants to use his taxes, I guess, that's up to him, but I thought.
Yeah, in my opinion, if, if there's gonna be more than two, there's any chance of that, we gotta notice these, um, as special meetings, because the all five of you are recognized in the faces, you're gonna probably get questions or discussions of some sort. Whether that becomes deliberative, you don't know, but you'd rather not find out after that.
Yep.
It's just that, that caveat with it, that's got, that making us more careful, I guess, that we do post it, so we don't.
And I don't know what the turnout's gonna be, I've, seemed like this was an issue that a lot of people had interest in, now whether they can show off for either one of these. Both rooms are kind of, fair, we get fifty people in there, probably be some people still walk in, so maybe get sixty in there if we have to, but, uh, if they get filled up, we may be doing more. At this point, we'll see what the interest is. Yeah, thanks for coming to the VA commission, uh, last week too, and putting that out to them, so I know, I expect many of them wound up attending.
It's that distinction between taxes versus assessments that.
Yes.
How, you'll see how that goes, I'm very interested to see too.
Uh, one other item is this week, noise came out for the ISAC conference in August. Um, getting with Michelle, getting questions, I don't, is there been a lot of interest in the past as far as the five of us going to that in August?
I found value in the ISAC stuff in the past as well as the Naco stuff, and so, um, I was considering going this year as well. Maybe, we already missed the boat on Naco's national conference, but looking at doing the legislative or national next year, cause there's been so many changes since the last time I was able to go to one, but there's definitely value in going to them.
It's sometimes like, you look at the program and that agenda and sometimes decide, you know, if there is something there that you really see a value to for individuals, but yeah.
Is there been a process as far as if there's two or three of us looking at going, doing, um, approval as a group or?
Um, there, I mean, so far, we're, I mean, one, I haven't, I've been kind of only one that's come to some of them.
I went a long time ago, yeah, I was gonna say, it's been quite a while.
But there is, you know, we budget for, for, for education and travel for us, so there's, um, I think there's the ability for all five to go if we wanted to.
We could really shock them, put all five on the top. Naco or ISAC, either one.
We won't talk about anything important, Mike, so.
We won't, we won't even.
Put that, put that tongue delay.
I assume, I assume we're, uh.
We won't even meet with each other, we won't meet with each other.
Can't, yeah.
Yeah, don't say hi to each other.
I always figured that if we were, if I was at one of those with multiple ones of us, we would split up the breakout sessions that we're going to and cover all the ground.
Yeah, and you're usually not deliberating those anyways, in educational format, so yeah, it's good.
So hotel reservations, I've always learned on conferences, you want to get in right away, so in the past, we make our own hotel reservations. They do have a supervisor certification that I want to participate in, so that was partly interesting going in that as well. And then, uh, we're, like, they're supposed to be, ISAC's doing a round of visits, so have you heard from them?
Yeah, the ninety nine tour, yes, that's what she was coordinating, that's that tour that she was coordinating for us.
Okay. So we have an idea when they might be coming to visit with us here?
We just submitted the survey last week.
Okay. I'd ask.
Ooh, yep, 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 no one we know.
I was just like, man, I was just double tapping on how long she had a vacancy in the department to, to make sure it was clear. You know, I, I went, I went to two of those this year and I got a lot of benefit from them, so I highly recommend it. I'm not gonna, when is it in August though?
August twentieth through the twenty second, it's the third week in August.
I won't be able to go this year, but. Anyway, I'm sorry, when I cut you off.
No, 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 I was just thinking on this, like, I was like, oh, carpooling might be our out.
Yeah.
Since Mike's nervous, but I was gonna say, we'll ride together, we'll do a little stopper.
Yeah, I really don't think carpooling's a good idea.
That's all right, yeah, I do have a question though, just that you brought up the department head meeting, we talked about, or not the department head, but the policy review that would follow, if there's anybody planning to go to that tomorrow, I know you mentioned it, but, uh, you too, okay, cause I just thought that we have to. I know you have a policy coming.
Amanda, we're still on tomorrow? Department head and then policy right after?
Yeah, yeah, so that's the new schedule, uh, policy review, just to occur after department head meeting, it's the second Wednesday of the month. Department head meets at nine and then policy's at ten fifteen, and we post the agenda, we'll just, uh, yeah, in case more board members show up to policy review, so.
Do we sit in silence if we show up, if four or more, if three or more show up, we just sit and listen? I can do that once in a while.
We prefer, yeah, you know, number two, and then otherwise we, we kind of talked about this, I think, a few weeks ago, where, you know, if there's somebody who really has a reason to attend, maybe talk to your, uh, email your colleagues about that and kind of decide who's gonna attend, if it's, if it's not gonna be two, I think we've only got one officially, um, supervisor on policy review right now, that's you and Chris. But there's, you know, if it is, assuming you get two or whatever, somebody else wants to be on that, you have a meeting for one reason, maybe talk, talk amongst yourselves. Backup options, we gotta give twenty four hours minimum, uh, notice, and notice that it was a special meeting, open and close it, just like we would, uh, regular meeting.
We kind of liked it, so it didn't mean that whoever needs to be there, somebody does need to present or whatever.
Talk to each other and say, hey.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm presenting tomorrow with a post bid questionnaire. We get to.
So circling back to the, um, attending ISAC or Naco or whatever, I think that our process has been, there is a travel request form that staff uses, and we've we've done that for Justin Brand, the two classes he attended, so when you fill out that form and forward it to the board, we'll put it on the next meeting agenda for.
And the, uh, anything else for the good of the cause, otherwise we entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Security.
Thank you.
High forty five.